Good morning Birmingham, today is August 22nd, the time is 9:33 a.m. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today's invocation will be led by Reverend Darrell Cunningham Senior Pastor of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Counselor J.T. Moore. If you are willing and able, please stand and join.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we're so thankful today for you being such an awesome God. We thank you for giving us a spirit of protection, a spirit which allows us to know that we are under your auspices and your protection in every way. We thank you Heavenly Father for giving us our sins and right now we ask you for direction at this council day that they may make great decisions which influence and rule the lives of those in which they serve. We thank you right now Heavenly Father for the leadership, for the spirit and the connection to you. Finally Heavenly Father, we ask you for a great power that will allow those who've lost lives throughout this world, throughout this nation. Give them a spirit of peace and knowing that you are Almighty God and that their death, their loss and those things they are suffering from right now is all in your hands. Give them comfort in knowing that we are there for them. We thank you and we pray this prayer in your holy name, my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, in the name of the Lord, the King, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much Reverend Cunningham for that thoughtful prayer and thank you Counselor Moore for leading us in our pledge. Good morning Mr. Clerk.
Good morning.
Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tim Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Alexander.
Good morning President. Counselors, the minutes are not ready from the meetings of May 2nd, 2023 through August 8th, 2023. Good morning Mr. Mayor.
Morning Madam President. Good morning to the entire council, good to see everybody. Good morning to the public. Madam President and council, if you didn't know, Sidewalk Film Festival kicks off this week. The cool part about it is that this is the 25th Sidewalk Film Festival and so that is a long duration, so I want to give a shout out to all the sponsors, supporters, the team that puts it on, one of my favorite people T. Marie King and so many others that I didn't name for all their hard work. But I would want to suggest for our citizens to come out to Birmingham's historic downtown theater district now through Sunday and check out up and coming as well as award winning films by local, regional, as well as national filmmakers. And you can get more details at SidewalkBest.com, again that's SidewalkBest.com. I think you all recently got an update last week, I believe at the community hall related to Common Ground. Well tomorrow nearly 600 K through 8th grade, middle and high, as well as middle and high school students, so pretty much K through 12 students, 600 of them are expected to come out to Bill Harris Arena for the 2023, 2024 Common Ground kickoff. These young people will be partnered with coaches from across our community who will guide and mentor them in conflict resolution throughout the school year. I want to give a special thanks to Presiding Judge Andre Sparks as well as his team at Municipal Court, as well as Galvin Phillips and his team at Department of Youth Services and I want to give a special shout out to you all as Birmingham City Council for supporting this effort as it relates to our, one of our tools within our toolbox and our strategic slash long-term play related to conflict resolution for our youngest generation. This Friday will be Food Truck Friday, August 25th. It will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in front of City Hall. I want to let our citizens know as well as our employees, as well as those who work in the area to come out and enjoy lunch and a variety of food trucks. Again, I want to thank this Birmingham City Council again for taking some bold steps with me four years ago. We created the Birmingham Promise here at City Hall, we burnt it here, then kicked it out and it now stands as its own 501(c)(3), has its own tax status, its own board, its own executive director. But this Sunday, the Birmingham Promise will turn four years old. That's four years of supporting our students with apprenticeships, job training and financial support towards their college education. And so just stay tuned for how we'll commemorate the last four years and acknowledge some of the first graduates as well as some of those current students, as well as our employee, employer partners. But I am very grateful to the Birmingham City Council who took some bold steps as we started this journey four years ago, so truly from the bottom of my heart, thank you for supporting this effort. The issue I bring up every Tuesday no different than I bring up, trash and refuge will be related to our 3rd grade students, literacy act and reading. And so the school system, and I will support them and I'll ask you all to join in if your schedule permits, is having a community rally for reading. Again, that's a community rally for reading. The city of Birmingham is joining Birmingham City Schools for a special reading rally to support our young scholars and students. The event will take place next Monday, August 28th at Bill Harris Arena. Just to entice parents and community partners to participate, there will be door prizes, free books for families and opportunities to volunteer throughout the year. The rally begins at 6:00 and I want to encourage everybody to go to bhamsydyschools.org for more details. Again, that's bhamsydyschools.org to just give you some sobering facts if we did nothing. If we did nothing absolutely at all, 3rd grade teachers didn't do anything, if parents didn't do anything, if community partners and supporters and volunteers didn't do anything. And the test was taken in April of next year, then four out of 10 3rd graders would have to repeat the 3rd grade. I deem that and I believe you would, it's unacceptable. So let's start this school year off strong by finding ways to support our 3rd graders, support our 3rd grade teachers as well as our 3rd grade parents. This is truly a village issue that we all need to address and support, so thank you for that. A few more notes, Madam President and Council, the Strong Her event will take place next Wednesday. Now that's, it's part of the monthly wind down Wednesday event, but we will honor Strong Her on next Wednesday, the women that is of Strong Her. This will be Wednesday, August 30th from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. At this event, you'll also be able to get a sneak, sneak peek at an upcoming book featuring these heroes and meet many of these women who are change agents in our city, so I want to encourage those if your schedule permit to come out next Wednesday, August 30th at 5:30 p.m. There will be a cash bar, sorry it's not free, not served, vendors and food trucks and a live DJ at the Battle Auditorium. For details, you can go to birminghamal.gov/strongher. The city of Birmingham is inviting residents out to be a part of the CERT team, that's C-E-R-T, that stands for Community Emergency Response Team. The Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service will offer training in first aid, search and rescue, disaster recovery, CPR and more for citizens who want to participate. Sessions begin on Tuesday, September 5th and you can call 205-254-6560 for more details. Again, if you want to be a part of the CER team and learn more, training in first aid, search and rescue, disaster recovery, CPR and more, it will begin this Tuesday, September, I'm sorry, September 5th, not this Tuesday, but Tuesday, September 5th and you can call 205-254-6560 for more details. Again, we want to encourage our residents to participate in ACE. Madam President and Council, I spoke, Dr. Darrell O'Quinn was there last night as well. I spoke before the CAB last night and shared some intimate detail just about basic city services from trash to street paving, to demolition and blight, to zoning and ordinances, all the way to weed abatement and grass cutting, parks and etc. But we want our citizens to be able to understand more, peel back the layers and see under the hood of how their city government works from A through Z. So the Academy of Civic Engagement also called ACE prepares residents to go into their communities to act, serve and lead and we want them to participate in this upcoming ACE class. And the deadline to apply is September 5th and I want to encourage everybody to go to birminghamal.gov/ACE to sign up and/or to receive more information about this program. Trash updates are standard, but please go to birminghamal.gov/pickup to get more information or text BHARMREADY to 888-777. That was longer than usual, but thank you for giving me some time. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, we appreciate all of those announcements and took note of what events and those items that you wish for us and the public to be aware of, so thank you very much. At this time, without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules and allow for our presentations. We have three presentations today. The first, Counselor Clark if you're ready, the first is Counselor Carol Clark, she has recognition of a birthday.
It's my pleasure today to acknowledge a young lady who is celebrating her 98th birthday and I will read as a resolution the words of this proclamation that came from the mayor's office. So it is with immense joy and heartfelt gratitude that the city of Birmingham celebrates the remarkable 98th birthday of a cherished member of our community, Mrs. Oracene Jackson Jenkins. And whereas Ms. Jenkins was born on August 25th, 1925 in Putnam, Alabama, as the beloved daughter of the late Mr. Willie Jackson and Mrs. Etter Jackson, instilling in her a legacy of strength, compassion and resilience. And whereas during her youth, Mrs. Jenkins illuminated the halls of the Pleasant View Baptist Church in the Enslie Community with her vibrant spirit and dedication, laying the foundation for a lifetime of unwavering faith and service. And whereas Mrs. Jenkins graduated with distinction from the Arthur Harold Parker High School in 1947, setting a precedent for academic excellence that continues to inspire generations. And whereas Mrs. Jenkins dedicated 31 years of her life to the Baptist Princeton Medical Center, retiring in 1997 with an enduring record of service in the dietary department, a testament to her dedication and enduring work ethic. And whereas Mrs. Jenkins' strength and kindness have shown brightly throughout her life, serving as a beacon of hope and illuminating the lives of countless individuals fortunate enough to cross her path, having played roles as a neighborhood mother, grandmother, advisor and mentor, consistently offering wisdom, compassion and inspiration to those in need. The Birmingham City Council takes immense pride in recognizing and honoring Mrs. Oracene Jackson Jenkins for her exceptional contributions to our community, for the radiant presence she embodies as a beacon of strength, resilience and kindness. Now therefore be it resolved by this city council with Mayor Randall Woodfin concurring that we hereby issue this resolution celebrating the 98th birthday of Mrs. Oracene Jackson Jenkins and encourage the residents of Birmingham, Alabama to celebrate this momentous triumph of this upstanding citizen. She is a woman of true valor and virtue that deserves to be celebrated not just today but every day. So I'd like to ask to move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, say nay.
What I always wanted, second.
We help you out.
Okay, that was UC, I'm sorry, that was UC to pass the resolution. Do we need to do it over again?
To pass it, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for UC.
They did it.
You already did, you already did, yes.
Okay, now move the resolution.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I think I need to make more presentations, but I'd like to invite a member of the Jenkins family up to just talk about Mrs. Jenkins and we have her here with us today.
They're going to give her the mic.
Would you like to say something? I don't know that I can pass.
It's behind you.
Birthday girl is going to address the.
I'm just thrilled they pulled this off on me, but I'm thankful to be here and I appreciate everybody and I just had a wonderful.
Happy birthday Ms. Jenkins. Clearly y'all, yes, give it up.
So we have both a proclamation and a resolution from the council. Would any of the family members like to speak?
I'd just like to say.
Come on speaking.
It's been my incredible mother-in-law for years and Ms. Jenkins has been my incredible mother-in-law for years.
You've been my great daughter.
And I wish her a happy 98th birthday.
Thank you.
Ms. Clark, Madam President and Council, I would just like to say that Ms. Jenkins clearly is the example of drinking, order, minding my business because she looks really good. Happy birthday young lady.
Thank you. Our next presentation is by Council President Pro Tim Crystal Smitherman and she has a presentation of an art piece. Good morning.
So I'm gonna let Mr. Skipper do most of the talking, but you know, we've had him before us numerous times to show us artwork and he's gonna have a art piece of I think Mayor Woodfin's hero Fred Shuttlesworth, so Mr. Skipper.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning to the council, to the mayor. This is a great opportunity for me to say thank you to the city of Birmingham who has been such a great blessing to me in my life and my career. And a few years ago, I was commissioned by the family of Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth to do a commemorative painting of his life and career in civil rights movement. Not too long ago, not too long before he passed away, he had an inclination to go to the Civil Rights, I mean the 16th Street Baptist Church and to reminisce and over his life. There was a photographer there, you know photographers come from all over the world who come to the 16th Street Baptist Church. And the photographer saw him and asked if he could take some pictures of him. And Reverend Shuttlesworth told him that he was getting ready to go back to the church where he pastored. And the photographer asked if he could go with him and he said yes. And so Reverend Shuttlesworth went to the old church where he used to pastor and he sat down on one of the pews, no lighting in the church, only lighting sunlight coming through the window. And he sat down and he started to think about his life and as you know, he had a lot to think about. And so the photographer snapped the picture and the family allowed me to see that photograph and it was a photograph that I was inspired, that this is the one that I really needed to work with. And God started dealing with me about a few other things concerning his life, particularly the four little girls which stayed on his mind, four little girls that were killed at 16th Street Baptist Church. So I recruited some models, some young ladies who would model as the four little girls. And then I thought about all the times that Reverend Shuttlesworth, his home was bombed so many different times and he would come out of the rubbish every time on harm. And so I recruited another model to play a part of the guardian angel who was always watching over Reverend Shuttlesworth and who frustrated Bull Connor to no end. And one thing that we need to really grab a hold to is for the city of Birmingham. The city of Birmingham is known for a lot of things outside of the city of Birmingham. In my career, I've had a lot of travel and a lot of people say different things about this city, but one thing about this city, our rich legacy that's in this city, that comes from the extensive work, heart and love of our ancestors. And a lot of times you can be so caught up in where you're going that you forget how you got there and where you came from. And one of the most powerful things that we have in the city of Birmingham is a group of ancestors who has given us enough inspiration to do anything that we want to do and accomplish anything we want to accomplish with class and dignity. And right now, I'd like to start a donation of five of my works of art that I want to give back to the city that I love so much. And these are not just pictures, these are valuable, value-appreciating pieces of fine art that I've chosen to depict some of our greatest ancestors. And one of the first ones we want to do is one of Reverend Shuttlesworth. I've got permission from his family not only to do the painting, but to include his signature on this limited edition print. And I'd like to present that this morning, it's numbered, signed and numbered, one of one, to the city of Birmingham. And I'd like to say I appreciate this city as much as anybody can.
Good, okay.
Thank you Madam President.
Thank you so much and Mr. Skipper, thank you so much for just your beauty, your talents and this beautiful piece of art. We look forward to the other pieces that you will be depicting again, the legacy and the leaders and just the people of Birmingham, so thank you so much, thank you. Yes sir, come on. We love it. Thank you so much. Our last presentation this morning is by Counselor J.T. Moore and he has a resolution to present in recognition of some outstanding athletic performance.
So I don't have a picture to present, but I do think that it is very important that anytime we have individuals that are pouring into the lives of our young people, that we take the time to honor them and celebrate the successes of those young people. And so today, I wanted to honor and acknowledge the Birmingham Metro Little League All-Stars, group of young men that came out of Engle Nook that had an opportunity to do an outstanding job this baseball season. And so we have with us Principal Steve Brown over at Engle Nook Middle School as well as Brother Brian Hill. And so I'm going to give you all an opportunity to come up and speak about the things that the young men were able to accomplish and just kind of tell us about that.
Good morning Council President, Council Members, Mayor and staff. The Birmingham Metro Little League was founded in 2019. As Principal of Engle Nook, I realized that our community did not have any youth activities. So I felt it was just important to have something that we could do with the kids to give family-friendly activities in the neighborhood. So in 2019, we started the Birmingham Metro Little League and through our meeting of several individuals who actually were here for the major league project that they were trying to get done, we were able to meet with them and they aligned us with the Little League International. And so we acquired the affiliate for our area and our footprint is the city of Birmingham, so all parks are eligible to participate in the All-Star program. So the last three years, Coach Hill, my classmate at Ramsey High School and fellow baseball player, he retired from California, came back to Birmingham and started working with me to build the program. So this year, we were able to compete in the state tournament, our team which consisted of five players from Engle Nook, we had one young man from Green Acres I believe and three from North Birmingham with about five guys from the Adamsville Park West program. They participated and they represented us and we fell short in the state tournament. We were one series away from ESPN and the Southeast Regional, but we were just so proud of the young men who we thought it best to let them focus on academics this morning and we will take this recognition to them and let them know as they, many are watching now and we'll watch the broadcast later, but that's our story and we will continue to work, we're going to begin our fall season toward preparing our young men for taking advantage of an opportunity that's not really taken advantage of in our urban areas. We are a faith-based organization and we do put Jesus Christ in the Most High in front of them every day, so we thank you for this opportunity.
So I'll just move for UC.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you for bringing this resolution forward, for our consideration, Counselor Moore, and I want to thank Principal Brown and Mr. Hill for the work that you've done in our community. We know how important sports are to our youth and these opportunities, as you said, they don't come often in the urban areas, so we thank you for seeing the need and going out and putting it in place. Thank you so much.
All right, counselors, at this time we'll return back to our agenda and Mr. Clerk, would you read those items that are considered for consent?
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two, Madam President, with items 1, 2, 3 and 4. Then we skip over to page 4, we have items 10 and 11 on consent. Page 5, we have items 12, 13, 14 and 15 on consent. Please note that on item number 15, we'll be changing the total amount to $85,000 and we'll be adding $10,000 from Counselor Smitherman's expense account, I guess, discretionary account, I'm sorry. Page 6, we add items 16, 17 and 18 to consent and on item number 16, we'll be adding $5,000 from District 2's discretionary account. And we pick back up with the consent agenda on page 7 with items 19, 20 and 21. Page 8, we have items 22, 23 and 24 on consent. Page 9, items 25, 26, 27 and 28 are on consent. Page 10, we have items 30, 31, 32 and 33 on consent. On page 11, we have items 34, 35, 36. Page 11, we have items 34, 35, 36, 37, and item 39 on consent. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Councilors, are there any items you wish to have added or removed from consent? Council Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Councilor J.T. Moore, I'd like to remove items 17 and 22 from the consent agenda.
Okay, that's item 17 on page six, and item 22 on page eight. Thank you. Any other items, councilors? Councilor Quinn?
Yeah, catch up here. Item number three, that is page two, I'd like to remove that from consent, and item number 23, that's page eight, removed from consent.
And what was the other unapproved items?
Item number three on page two, and item number 23 on page eight.
Okay. Any other items, councilor? Thank you. Any other items? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, and those are indicated with the P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. Those items that have been listed as consent, they have been approved. We hope you have, if you are here for any of those items, we hope you have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. First item, Mr. Clerk.
First item should be item three on page two, in ordinance, to further amend the grants fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, by appropriating $1 million to the mayor's office for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Office of Air Radiation for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant per grant award received. Motion, please.
All right, thank you, Dr. Quinn. You asked this to be removed from consent.
Yeah, so I'm aware that we had applied for some EPA funding opportunities. I was just wondering if we could elaborate on how this funding is going to be utilized.
Yes, sir. Chief?
Yeah, Madam President, just allow us some time to let Amelia Muller to come up. Okay, good to see you.
Good morning. Amelia Muller, I serve as City Design Principal in the mayor's office. So the item before you is the acceptance of a formula grant from the EPA for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. This is a grant to produce a climate action plan for the entire Birmingham MSA. The city of Birmingham is leading this effort alongside the Regional Planning Commission. Through these funds, we will put together a preliminary climate action plan in early 2024, and then follow that by a comprehensive climate action plan that we'll submit to the EPA in 2025. And the last piece I'll note is that this sort of planning exercise is essentially a prerequisite for then pursuing any implementation dollars from the EPA under the same program. So it's essentially us setting the baseline on a number of metrics that we will then be eligible to pursue implementation dollars for.
Dr. Quinn?
So would the Climate Action Plan inform city policy only, or is it more of a broader community plan?
So it is a broader community plan. It is inclusive of the broader region, so it covers the MSA. The city of Birmingham will be one of, you know, several municipalities that participate. We're leading the effort based on our eligibility within the terms of the grant. But it will largely focus on kind of key measures related to greenhouse gas reduction and essentially, you know, industries and other facets of, you know, pollution and pollution reductions, what really is sort of focused in that space. But there will be community engagement elements to the plan and analyses that we put together around, say, for example, workforce opportunities in greenhouse gas reduction and broader, you know, landscape opportunities in the space.
Will stormwater impacts be addressed in the plan?
So this grant is really more focused on air pollution. It, you know, it is one of many tools in our toolbox as we consider, you know, sort of broader resilience and sustainability strategies such as stormwater, but this program specifically supports focus more around air pollution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Moore?
No, so I think, obviously, now I think for the most part, you know, Councilor Quinn answered the questions. Obviously, you know, this is something that, you know, I'm very interested in, considering, you know, my district has, you know, a lot of those key areas that I'm pretty sure will come up in this study, so, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that update and overview, appreciate it. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Item number three passes. Next item?
Madam President, we have an item that was on consent that needs to be revisited. It's item number 24, is it 24? Item 24. So we need to reconsider the consent agenda, and I need to read the synopsis because the parties changed on that item, it's totally a different item.
Okay, so we need to reconsider the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Abbott?
I move for reconsideration of the consent agenda to remove item 24 from consent.
Second.
And then adopt the consent agenda after that. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, now read adopted, absent 24.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion to read?
I move for readoption of the consent agenda.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so it's just on the regular item now, we'll get to it. So next would be item five, if you're ready for it.
Thank you.
So ready for item five?
Item five.
Okay. Page three, item five, in ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for as the act of said city, a contract for the sale and development of real estate with CHP Acquisitions LLC, under which the city will convey approximately 19,628 square feet of undeveloped real estate located at 70712 and 714 Sixth Street North to CHP Acquisitions for a purchase price of $380,000. And CHP Acquisitions will undertake a project on the property to construct a building of approximately 9,800 square feet in size for use as a mixed-use development, including retail and/or office or residential uses, and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed and such other documents and instruments as are required to finalize the sale of the property upon terms of the contract. This item is one of permanent operation, we need UC to pass today.
I move for UC.
Okay, we're going to start doing the roll call. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have called you, Councilmember Smith. President Protem, I mean, President Alexander.
Aye.
Okay. So we have UC, we need a motion on the item.
Second.
Okay, the item is before you.
All right, thank you, councilors. This ordinance, it's written, it's a, where we're contracting for the sale and development of real estate with CHP Acquisitions. Any questions or you need any more information about this item? Yes, Dr. Quinn?
Is the development team here to tell us more about their project?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. We'll bring up Ms. Janice Dothard from IEO and the developer desk to pick on this item.
Thank you. Good morning.
This morning, we were asking your support for the sale of the property to CHP. We have with us Herschel Hamilton, who's a partner in that...
Pull your mic down.
Thank you, sorry. We have Herschel Hamilton, who can give you more details on what he's proposing to do on that site with office spaces, about 10,000 square feet that they may be developing on this site, if you would...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you, Ms. Dothard.
Good morning, councilors.
Good morning.
How are you all? Good. As you may know, about a year and a half ago, our firm purchased the building at 1527th Avenue North, and we renovated it for our office space. We're on the top floor, we have a dental practice on the ground floor, dental wellness center, the dentist is Charlecia McLean, a young African-American dentist. We're partners in the building, and, you know, we are planning further development in that immediate area in the 1500 block. The city of Birmingham owns property right at the corner of Seventh Avenue and Sixteenth Street, which is the property that is subject to this agenda item. We propose to purchase the property and develop a mixed-use facility, primarily to support retail and food service development for the Civil Rights District. As you all know, in the Civil Rights District, you know, people come to the district, but there's not a lot of, you know, not much food, not much beverage, and things of that nature. And so, we think that a mixed-use development that has retail on the ground floor, primarily food service, and office or some residential upstairs will work. We're in the process of doing all of our due diligence in that regard. During the committee meetings, I provided information about the property that we purchased before and after pictures, which showed in the foreground a lot that we proposed to purchase from the city of Birmingham, and also showed a massing diagram that showed a rendering of a prospective mixed-use development on that site. We also have the building to the immediate west of us under contract, the old automotive friction building, and we're going to close on that property and do an adaptive reuse project. Our goal is to revive that whole Seventh Avenue corridor. As many of you know, for the last decade, we've been involved in the redevelopment and restoration of the Ballard House, which is in the 1400 block of Seventh Avenue. And so, our goal is to really expand and extend redevelopment opportunities all throughout the Seventh Avenue corridor.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Councilor Clark, and then Councilor Abbott?
I don't mean to take you back 25 years, but the downtown northwest urban renewal and redevelopment plan, so this, these lots are in that, in the boundaries of that development plan that was probably adopted when you were in the mayor's office.
That's right.
Yeah, so...
And that should go back to, I think, 1993.
1993, okay. So, so do you, do you have to, is that, does that create an overlay district that you have to conform to? I'm just, I know it's in a design review district from the GIS...
So it's in the design review district and also an urban redevelopment district, and as a result, you know, there are, you know, design guidelines that we have to comply with, it has to come before a design review. It is not in the, that particular parcel is not in the Civil Rights Historic District.
Okay.
On Seventh Avenue, Poole's Funeral Home, St. John Church, and the Ballard House are in the Historic Civil Rights District, but the other properties on Seventh are adjacent to it.
So you'll be, you'll be, your development, your designs will be regulated or measured against that downtown northwest plan and its intent? I think it was mixed-use and, I guess, mid-rise, but I don't know about the density, but, but I'm just, I haven't seen it in a while, I'm just...
Well, so, you know, over the last 20-some-odd years, a number of plans have been developed in that area. You know, the comprehensive plan had a framework plan that focused on the area that talked about, you know, different, you know, land uses, and so it's evolved over the years. And so, we'll comply with whatever provisions are in place for that redevelopment district, Civil Rights District, and the framework plan associated with the project.
Okay, sounds confusing, but okay.
It's a spaghetti soup of districts, but, you know, it's easy to follow at the end of the day.
Thank you. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, my question actually is not for Mr. Hamilton, it's for Ms. Dothard, and that is concerning the appraisal on the piece of property that we're looking to sell. Do we have an appraisal?
Council, we use the county assessment on this property, but we can go, we can, I can send you what that was on that, is in line with what we're asking, what we're receiving.
Okay, when you say the county, you mean the tax assessment?
Tax assessment, assessments, yes.
Well, that's not the same as an appraisal.
No, no, we did not have the, what we have on the, on the assessment, and for the value that we're getting from the property, it was, the gap was a good gap that justified not having to go out and get a, an appraisal. But we can do that if we need to.
We don't want to do that.
Yeah, we don't, we shouldn't have to.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Mayor, you said what?
Ms. Dothard said we can go out and do that if we need to, and I am responding to one of my team members that say we don't want to do that. What I would like for you to do, Ms. Dothard, is explain in detail the process you went through and the gap, so the council can understand why we did not do an appraisal.
Okay, that would go into more detail on the financial side, and I know we normally don't talk about that out here.
Well, if this, if, Madam President, if Ms. Abbott or any of your colleagues need more detail in explaining that, then we're more than welcome to go into an executive session.
Well, I'm a trusting person. If you could send it to me via email after the meeting, that would be sufficient. Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, to Ms. Abbott's question, Ms. Dothard, please, make sure you send that to Chief Mitchell and I, so we can get that to Ms. Abbott's staff. We want to get that to her before noon or by noon.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Yes, I wanted to take this opportunity to just kind of bring up something that we talked about in pre-council. The, just the fact that Mr. Hamilton mentioned that there's been several plans over the years that have covered this area. However, our latest city center master plan, which I believe was completed in, I don't know, 2019 or something like that, the council has not had an opportunity to adopt that as the official city policy, which, you know, there's a lot of, a tremendous amount of public input that goes into developing those plans, and it's, it's literally the vision of the people, and these, these plans are very important in directing future city policy, you know. Sometimes that may be, you know, a decade in the future. So I just wanted to remind my colleagues that a lot of work and funding went into producing those plans, and I think that because of all of the community input in particular, we should definitely consider adopting those as the official policy of the city of Birmingham. So just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Any other comments? Councilor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. It's really just seeing the praises of Mr. Hamilton. He really has developed a lot of Birmingham, and so I'm excited to see this, Council Quinn, in your district, really, because he kind of explained, he went to go get, maybe it was like a soda, and you had to go a couple of miles down the road to get it, and you're right, usually in most museums, you usually have food inside the museum or around, and so I think this is part of the bigger master plan for developing the Civil Rights District, including Smithfield. So I think in about 10 years, people won't even recognize the area. So I just want to say thank you for investing in Birmingham, taking a chance on that area. I'm excited to see what's in store.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counselors? At this time, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you all. Item number five passes. Thank you very much. Next item?
See, item number six, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for, as the act of said city, a termination of deed restrictions nine, 12, 13, and 14, under which restrictive covenants imposed by the City of Birmingham on property known, now known as Daniel Payne Industrial Park pursuant to deed to Cedar Real Estate Group Four LLC, AKA Craig Birmingham LLC, dated December the 17th, 2020. She'll be released in accordance with the terms of agreement and restrictions as recorded in the deed. Again, this is an item of permanent operation. I need you to see to pass today.
I move for you, see.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Protem Smithman?
Aye.
Council President Alexander?
Aye.
All right. Motion on the item, please.
Move the item.
Item is before you.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. Item six is an ordinance where we are approving the termination of some deed restrictions with the property known as the Daniel Payne Industrial Park. Any questions regarding this item? Need any clarification? Counselor Clark, yes?
Just want to understand, like, is this releasing them from restrictive covenants, which everybody else is subject to, or, I mean, what are we doing exactly?
President?
Yes, Chief?
Yes.
We'll bring up Ms. Janice Dohther again, and Attorney Stanley can really dive deep into more than, we'll let Attorney Stanley, because it's more legal.
Ms. Dohther?
Good morning, Attorney Stanley.
Good morning. Jim Stanley, Office of the City Attorney. To Counselor Clark's question, these covenants are actually specific to this property. When we sell property in Daniel Payne in particular, there are covenants that require the buyer to build a building, usually of a certain size, within a certain period of time. That has been done now, and so, the covenants related to that, they're asking us to release in order that they can get financing or have, not have that encumbrance of a title. The city's remedy, if they did not perform, would be to acquire the property back. And so, if you're trying to sell or finance the property, the other parties will be concerned if a third party has the ability to take title of the property back. So, this just simply releases those covenants. There are a set of general or restricted covenants for Daniel Payne that this, this has nothing to do with, as far as design and uses.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Woods?
Thank you. Just trying to get some clarity on which project is, is this the thing that keeps coming back with people mending? Or I guess, can we get an idea of, I guess, the better question would be, where are we with development at Daniel Payne? Is there one ongoing project, or is there multiple things? And then, has this owner done anything with the property since they got?
Ms. Dohther, thank you.
Ms. Dohther. Yes, the building is complete. They've fully developed, and this is why they needed the, the release, so that it would follow the chain of title. So, when, if they were to ever sell it, it wouldn't be showing that the city still has a lien, or may have a lien on that property. But they have done everything that they were supposed to do. That's why the deed.
There's multiple projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Item six passes. Next item?
Should be item seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, upon receipt of payment, in the amount of $2,508.65, to execute a quick claim deed to WF Real Property Resources LLC for the sale of property legally described as Block Two. Lot six, Johnson and Montgomery, add to Woodlawn, map book page three, page, I'm sorry, map book three, page nine, in the Office of the Judge of Probate, Jefferson County, Alabama, partial ID number 230214313, city account 3035, and located at 13657th Street South, Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement liens in accordance with section 3-1-4C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. Again, an item of permanent operation. I need you to see to pass today.
Motion for you, see.
And Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Council President Protem Smithman?
Aye.
Council President Alexander?
Aye.
All right. Motion on the item, please.
I'll move. Second.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor, upon receipt of payment, to execute a quick claim deed at WF Real Property Resources LLC. Any questions or any additional information needed for this, consideration of this item? Yes, Counselor Woods?
Just want to ask if we have a list that we could get of the city-owned property?
Do we have a list?
A list of city-owned property?
Well, just a list of city-owned properties.
Oh, yes.
So, you'll be able to provide that?
I'll have to confer with the property.
I got you.
Chief, yes.
Yeah. So, Counsel, just for clarification, what is the ask related to the item? Is there a list that this piece of property is a part of that includes other pieces of property, like all the property the city owns? Okay.
Mayor Woodson?
I think there is a list, Counselor Woods, of property. That's an extensive list. And I think that list, you know, has separate categories. So, I'm not sure if there's one master list, right? Like, you have existing properties that were used. So, for example, you have fire stations, police precincts, libraries, rec centers, parks, I go on and on and on, Bowwell, on and on and on. And then, you have property not in use. So, I think what both team members are trying to get some clarification on, are you saying that, is there a list related to what's in front of you on this item, or something else, or you just want a list?
Yeah. I guess, list of property that's not currently in use would probably be more accurate.
Okay. I think, I think we can help with that. And, Madam President, if Counselor Woods will be patient with me, don't necessarily put me under a timeline. I just need to make sure we give you accurate information. I think the beauty, I think we had some conversations back in 18 or 19. It was early. It was literally four or five years ago, where we kept coming before you all on one-offs. So, you all, you were asking some questions about, hey, what are we doing with our surplus property? So, there was a lot of internal movement between legal, IEO, and others. And then, a property committee was created to create a process of how we engage that surplus property. So, what I want to do is just go to the committee and see where they are on that list. I know since then, a lot of property has been sold. So, how they call the list, et cetera, et cetera. Let me just get some information for you, because I don't want to make up anything right here in this, on the spot. But I will make sure I get factual, accurate information with you related to existing lists, and then share it with you and your colleagues. Madam President, if that's okay? And Counselor Woods, I hope that satisfies your question.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been reminded, and Mayor, you did say, I think it's been three or four years where some of this conversation has come up and asked me about these type lists, and as you said, the property committee was created. So, I know Counselor Woods was gracious enough to say, "Okay," but I would like to put you on the clock for this one, and we would like to get that information within a certain amount of time, so that in all councils, not just Counselor Woods, I think we're all interested in that. And with the clarity and the requests that he made, I think it's something that we're all pretty much interested in. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to suggest that, you know, some of these matters could be taken up in the Administration Committee, too, where we often deal with matters of real estate sales and such. But to this particular item, I just want to remind us that I don't think we're selling clear title. We're selling our interests, and we establish these interests through all this demolition activity that has gone on throughout the ages. And so, it strikes me that we have an interest, we don't own these vacant lots that we're burdened with trying to maintain, but we do have an interest through the liens we've placed on these properties. And there has been some legislation crafted that would give us authority to foreclose on the demolition liens or code enforcement liens, and thereby get clear title. And we haven't really championed that legislation. I think it's something really important, because we have a stake in so many of these vacant lots, but we don't really have clear title. So, just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Abbott, you look like you have a question.
Well, mine was actually almost exactly the same as Counselor Clark's, except that, you know, I guess the only other thing is, you know, we're always out cutting the grass and tearing things down and putting on liens. And I remember one of our previous department heads said that we only get back about 10% of the money that we plow into these useless endeavors, because mowing grass twice a year is a useless endeavor. It might make somebody happy, probably the guy that got the contract, but, you know, it's pretty much useless. Tearing down a vacant house that's full of strange people, that might be worthwhile in a neighborhood, but mowing grass twice a year is just a big, enormous money pit.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counselors? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate you considering to give us that list as requested. So, thank you. We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. Item seven passes. Next item?
Item eight, page four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute for, as the act of said city, an amendment to the agreement between the City of Birmingham and Oak Hill Memorial Association dated September the 1st, 2021, and further amended by September the 29th, 2022, to provide an additional $20,000 to assist with unanticipated repairs of Oak Hill Cemetery, increasing the funding under the agreement for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 term only, for an amount not to exceed $201,297. Again, this is an item of permanent operation. I need you to see to pass today.
Motion for you, see.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
President Protem Smithman?
Aye.
Council President Alexander?
Aye.
Motion on the item, please.
I'll move the item.
The item is before you.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. This is an ordinance authorizing the amendment in the agreement between the City of Birmingham and Oak Hill Memorial Association. Any questions or additional information needed for consideration of this item? Counselor Clark?
No question. Just want to make a comment that this is a really cool place. It's not only historic, but it was designated as one of five arboretums in the state of Alabama. So, now, it's an official tourist attraction. And this is the city cemetery, and it, it has some erosion issues, and I think just general deferred maintenance. I, I, I'm happy to see us investing in it, and I hope, you know, this is just the beginning.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I know, I believe they have walking tours that are also provided as part of this being a, an attraction. I won't say an attraction, but the tourists are people that come and visit, and residents as well.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Reverend Shuttlesworth is buried there also.
Very good.
So, since we've had a painting of him today, we should point out that you can go and visit all kinds of historic and very interesting people who are there in that cemetery. And it does need maintenance, because I drive past it every day, and the wall is falling down, and, you know, there's just a lot of, as you say, deferred maintenance.
Thank you. Mayor Woodson?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. All right, Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item number nine, excuse me, item number eight passes. Next item?
Item nine, a resolution deannexing from the City of Birmingham, a 25-foot-wide corridor of land owned by Liberty Park Joint Venture LLP, approximately .641 acres in size, more or less, located in the vicinity of 1,000, 10,011 and 10,019 Liberty Parkway, Birmingham, pursuant to the provisions of Article 7, Chapter 42, Title 11, Code of Alabama, 1975.
Moving on.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, Counselors, this is a resolution deannexing some of property from the City of Birmingham. Any questions about this one? Yes, Ms. Abbott?
Yes, I remember when we went over this in committee, that this was a deannexation, but we were to receive an equal amount of property. And I didn't, I saw it referred to, but I haven't seen anything that actually does it. So, where is the item that adds the property that we're supposed to be more or less trading?
Thank you, Mrs. Stanley. I believe he's going to come and talk to us about it. Thank you.
Yes, good morning, again, the council. To Counselor Abbott's question, there are two parallel deannexations occurring. Vestavia, the City of Vestavia is going to deannex a corridor which was subsequently deannexed in the Birmingham. Their county also has approved the deannexation. There's a resolution of that effect, but both deannexations have to go to the probate court for approval. So, the, the plan was to submit those both to probate court at the same time, so that both cities are on parallel tracks. Once the Vestavia deannexation is complete, then we're in a position to begin our annexation. And then, I think they're going to have a corresponding annexation of the park that we're deannexing.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
I just wanted to ask the clerk to note that this was also recommended by the Administration Committee, I think.
I saw it on there. Yet, it does.
Oh, it does say that? Okay. Sorry.
No problem. Good question. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? All right, Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. Thank you. Item number nine passes. Next item?
Should be item 17, on page six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute for, as the act of said city, a project agreement with Soku, Soku Birmingham LLC, in which Soku Birmingham will undertake a project that will involve the hiring of an additional 30 employees at Soku Southern Kitchen and Oyster Bar Restaurant located at Posits Food Hall, and the city will provide financial assistance to Soku Birmingham under the RISE program in the amount of $50,000 in support of the project.
Motion on the item?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Moore. You asked us to move this from, from stand.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Really just wanted to give the, the public an opportunity to, you know, to hear about this program and see the impact that it's making, because I'm pretty sure that there are several other entrepreneurs that, you know, or small businesses in our city that would love to be able to, to take advantage of something like this. And it just shows that we're, you know, we're pouring back into our small businesses, which are the backbone of our city. And so, I wanted to see if there was somebody from IEO that would just be able to kind of share information about what's actually taking place and, and how other entrepreneurs or small businesses could get involved. about what's actually taking place and how other entrepreneurs or small businesses could get involved.
Thank you, Chief. Do you have someone can speak to this for us? I see him back there waiting in the wings. That's all right. Good morning, Director Wesley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, my name is Cornell Wesley and I proudly serve as the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. So in light of shortcomings in incentive models and the financial disparities in capital lending, this council enthusiastically gave the green light to the establishment of RISE. RISE, which stands for again, Retention Incentives for Success and Expansion, aims to address these gaps effectively. One of the shining stars in the culinary world is Chef Erica Barrett, who has garnered national recognition for her remarkable achievements, including being featured on the Food Network and having her products acknowledged by none other than Oprah Winfrey. Remarkably, she's chosen to launch not just one, not just two, but three different brands right here in our beloved community of Birmingham, Alabama. The first of these brands, Southern Culture Food, is proudly showcased before you today. Subject to your approval, the first recipient of capital from this incentive program that you enthusiastically supported will be Southern Culture Feuds. It is worth noting that the funds as specified by the ordinance will be utilized only in the following specific ways. By one, they have to be based in Birmingham, Alabama. Number two, they have to retain or expand employee bases. Number three, they have support new startups specifically around capital inclusion. And otherwise, if you receive a declination from a bank, it also makes you eligible for this incentive program. The proceeds obtained through this program can cover startup costs, which include FFNE, in other words, furniture, fixtures and equipment, as well as salaries for the assumed employees you would have. If there's any specific questions related to the enterprise, we have Ms. Erica Barrett here as well.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Any other questions or any councilors?
I'll thank you for that breakdown. The only other question that I would ask is, where can people register for this opportunity?
Yes, so they could contact our department directly. Of course, that is available at www.birminghamal.gov hyperlink IEO, where more information as well as an online application can be found. It's a pretty easy process, drop-down menu, about one page worth of information.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Wesley.
Thank you.
We are ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. Item seventeen passes. And we look forward to these additional great eating opportunities in Birmingham. Thank you so much. Next item.
Item twenty-two on page eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the City of Birmingham and Tool Bank USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $345,000 to fund the Birmingham Tool Bank Initiative, through which Tool Bank USA will launch a tool bank affiliate program, I'm sorry, affiliate called the Magic City Tool Bank, which will involve the development of twenty-five hundred square feet. I'm sorry, that's a mistake. Two, five thousand square feet warehouse facility with thousands of tools located within the city. Two, the development of up to two full-time employees and one part-time employee to manage and operate the facility. Three, the empowerment of the community-based and neighborhood not-for-profit organizations with the tools, equipment and expertise which are central to the completing community transformation projects. And four, the expert instruction on the proper use of tools, equipment utilizing safety precautions. The establishment of the Tool Bank affiliate is suspected to promote the removal of blight in the city, generate revenue for the city, attract volunteers and private donation, bring jobs and estimated economic impact to the city.
All right, thank you, Councilor Moore. You asked us to move this.
Yes, ma'am. Look, I just wanted to, I wanted the public to know that, you know, this opportunity was available. I know we talked about surplus properties and, you know, areas of blight that need to be addressed. And so this gives us an opportunity to start, you know, really addressing those things ourselves. I know that, you know, Councilor Woods has, you know, done the Operation Lawn Care, which I think is a great start to just addressing some of the blight. But now we have an opportunity for the city and its residents to get involved and to do those things. It's an opportunity for us to, you know, partner with nonprofit organizations and, you know, really engage in our community and, you know, address those areas that, you know, for a long time, you know, have may have gone unaddressed or that you may only see cut once or twice a year. And so just wanted to make sure that the public knew that this was happening. I'm excited about it because I know that it was something that, you know, I thought was going to pass a long time ago. But I'm glad to see it on the agenda today. And so, yeah, just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I wanted to ask, I know that in the past our neighborhood associations have wanted to buy lawn equipment and other tools that were, could be dangerous in the wrong hands and the city would not allow that to happen due to the liability if someone was injured. And so I'm glad to see that we have an opportunity that is available. But it appears to me that neighborhood associations would still not be eligible for these tools unless they form an actual not-for-profit. Is that accurate?
Madam Attorney. I have Attorney Beverly Scruggs. They can come up and answer that question. Good morning, Attorney Scruggs.
Beverly Scruggs, and I serve with the Office of the City Attorney. The protocol for which organizations would be able to enter into partnership with the Tool Bank would of course be within their domain for them to decide what that is. But presently, as long as it's a not-for-profit, it doesn't have to be officially organized, as long as it's not for profit, as long as it's not a, you know, for-profit company, then their protocol would allow those organizations to potentially enter into partnerships with the Tool Bank affiliate.
Okay, so you're saying that anyone could come and borrow or rent tools from them regardless of whether they had not-for-profit status? If they just said they were one, then it was okay?
They have an application process and the organization would have to be reviewed by the affiliate for them to determine whether or not they would enter into partnership with that organization. But it is a possibility that it could be approved and the partnership could be entered into.
Okay, and so the liability for injury that someone might incur when they were using these tools, that's all on whose shoulders?
Presently, the ownership of the tools, of course, is on Tool Bank's shoulders. And they have the appropriate releases and paperwork that any affiliate or partner that they enter into an agreement would have to execute so that they would be able to appropriately ship the risk and manage the risk as an organization. So that's something that Tool Bank handles with their contracts and agreements that they have their partners enter into once they've approved the application for a partner.
Okay, well, I saw in the contract the attachments that they have to have insurance, but it's insurance on themselves. But it didn't say anything about the people using the tools. And that was my concern. I mean, I'm trying to protect the law department's, you know, bank account because settlements are always coming through and I don't want the City of Birmingham to be sued every time somebody, you know, drills a hole in something they weren't supposed to, like their arm or hand or, you know. So I'm just concerned about our liability and if we have any.
We wouldn't in this situation. As I said, Tool Bank affiliates would require their partners and any volunteer who volunteers and accesses the equipment that is used to execute the appropriate documents to allow them to access those tools or equipment.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. Counselor Clark?
I just wanted to express my excitement about this. And I know that a lot of my colleagues got together on this one to to fund it totally. And also, the mayor's office workshopped the proposal sum to, you know, make it a little more robust and comprehensive. So really excited. I wanted to give a shout out to Johnny Gunn, who's in the audience. And he's not only president of the Five Points West Community, but he's been a part of Magic City Blightbusters that this project was birthed from. And I want to thank my colleague Clinton Woods for bringing this to my attention through the ARPA pitch, whatever that was, that he organized, where several entities that had applied for ARPA funds were brought together to pitch to the council. And this was my favorite of all the projects because I felt like it really empowers our communities to help themselves. And so really interested in how this rolls out and the success of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm very excited about this as well because Blightbusters is in a couple of my neighborhoods. And just to see the transformation of what they have done. We, they took a vacant lot in North Tewesville and actually made it somewhat like a park. So people can sit down, they can grill out there. It really is helping to empower our neighborhoods. And especially with the city focusing more on cutting what we own, which are the railways and parks. This will allow the neighbors to be proactive. I'm very, very excited about this. I really, really am. Because I've been wondering for a long time, how can we get Blightbusters to expand to other neighborhoods? So thank you, Councilor Woods, for bringing this to our attention. But I really want to make sure the public knows which councilors actually put money towards this because I think this is going to be a real game changer. So it's District One, Counselor Woods, District Four, Counselor Moore, District Six, myself, Madam President, District Seven, District Eight, Carol Clark, and District Nine, Counselor Tate. So I look forward to seeing the transformation of our neighborhoods with this as well. So I really hope our neighborhood associations will take ownership of this, really, because I think that's why we formed these neighborhood associations, to help us more on the local level. So, and thank you, City Attorney's Office, for finally getting this to pass just in time for late summer because there's still a lot of high grass areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem. I want to join in echoing the excitement for, this was like, I think, one of the first ARPA or uses of ARPA funds that we all considered as a team or those of us that did see the need for this. And so I also want to thank Counselor Woods. I know we went back and forth, had a lot of conversations about those pitches and how we were going to do that. So thank you for bringing that opportunity to us for our consideration. I want to thank Mr. Thomas from Riley. He was also a very active member of the Blightbusters. And as Counselor Protem and other councilors said, when we've seen that work done by that particular group in our individual neighborhoods, we know what an asset and just a resource they could be for those neighborhoods that want to utilize this. So working with Tool Bank USA, we're just excited to see the growth and how this is going to come to fruition. So thank you, Mr. Gunn. Thank all of you who are working with that. And again, thank you, City Attorney. Also, I know we had to go through a lot of steps. Just wanted to be sure we had everything in order. So thank you, Attorney Scruggs, so that we can be sure liability and things like that are mapped out. So thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Madam President, also, another thing that was in there was that they will have expert instruction on the proper use of tools. I am dying to learn how to drive a backhoe, so I hope they have one.
We'll be sure we advertise and get them to let us know what tools they'll be using.
Well, you know, Counselor Woods is going to be leading it since he's been teaching books.
That's right, that's right. Thank you so much.
It could be a small backhoe.
All right, thank you, councilors. We're ready to entertain the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-two passes. Next item.
Item twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a second amendment to the agreement with Total LLC dated August the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, to extend the term of the agreement for one additional year due to the rollout and implementation of the Uniform Garbage Cart Program taking longer than anticipated. All other terms and conditions of the agreement shall remain the same. Motion, please.
All right, thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. You asked us to be removed from consent.
Yeah, so this issue, this, you know, the deployment of the uniform trash bins is an issue that I know that I'm asked about probably two or three times a week. And I feel like my colleagues are, get the same questions. So with that in mind, can we elaborate on why there's been a delay in the deployment?
Mayor Woodson?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. To Dr. O'Quinn's question and to all of you. Because it's a fair concern, we get the same issues about the remaining deployment. And it's not an issue of the actual bins. It's an actual issue of a backlog on the trucks. If and when you deploy these, we want to make sure there's alignment with the actual trucks when you pick them up as well. So do I need to go? We're waiting on four that were supposed to be here in July. When did we order them? There was two on the agenda for two more. We ordered these back in February. They were supposed to be here in July. They haven't arrived yet.
These are the one-armed bandit trucks?
Yes, sir. We are literally as impatient as the council as well as our residents, sir.
Got it. Any other questions? Counselor Abbott?
This isn't, well, it's related. People are wondering if you, if you're approved for the set-out service, does an extra person have to ride on the truck to do the set-out service? Or is that a separate vehicle with separate people who go around taking people's uniform garbage carts up and down the mountain when they're unable to do it themselves?
Madam?
Mayor Woodson?
Madam President, to Counselor Abbott's question, I'm going to answer this two ways. One is by saying, answering it is the most simple form I can by saying it's separate. I want to explain why it's separate. Same reason I explained to the community presidents of CAB last night. Right now, the way we've been doing trash, it is on a system. There's a whole logistical process on the routes, et cetera. And what we found is when we, by using a minimum of three employees in a truck, if and when one of them gets hurt or somebody's sick or somebody's out, it delays picking up trash in the timely fashion that our residents desire. If, by going to the actual lift, if we do the assistance program for those actual truck, the delays would be more than they are today with three employees on the truck with no lift. And so we have to use a separate system for that. What I wanted to, what I shared at a high level last night with the community presidents is we need to create a good neighbor program for, at the block level. And if the block level doesn't work for that particular block at the street level, for residents who know of that senior, who has some physical disability or hindrance, to assist that neighbor. We have to create that and we need to promote that program to offset what you just shared as far as those participating in the assist program. We believe being a good neighbor would be helpful for this. But we need people to opt into that and support their own neighbors, if that makes sense.
It does, it does.
Thank you. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to elaborate on what Counselor Abbott said yesterday when I was at home. My home officer, I heard the truck pull up, so I brushed the door, got the guy something to drink. And I demonstrated where Mayor Woodson was standing, everybody's trash can on my street. I pulled in, because everybody, you know, was elderly. And so I just pulled in everybody's trash can. So I demonstrated where Mayor Woodson was talking about the name of the van.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Protem?
How many more trash bins do we have left to roll out and which neighborhoods are left? I know you may not know the answer now, but can you get that to me? Because I literally just had somebody email me asking me when they were going to receive their trash van.
Yeah, so I'll be sure to provide the website. I don't remember the name of Birminghamal.gov slash what. They'll get it to me in a minute. I think there's at least twenty-five thousand, so I think there's one more round or plus. So again, it'll be dispersed. Don't know the name of the neighborhoods, but it'll be dispersed in all quadrants. So they're literally neighborhoods that touch every side of town, north, south, east, west, and pretty much, if not all nine, close to all nine districts.
When do we anticipate to get these bins? Just give me an estimated date.
Wish I could. We've been waiting on the trucks since July.
Okay, I know about the truck. Okay.
We need the trucks first.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
I know it's been like two years since we ordered the trucks.
Well, we got those. We ordered some more in February. So the trucks we ordered two years ago finally came in, which allowed us to deploy the first rounds of the uniform bins. We need the remaining trucks with the lifts to deploy the last leg. The name of the webs, and I was wrong with that number, is not The name of the webs, um, and I, and I was wrong with that number. It's not twenty-five thousand. It's actually forty-five thousand left that need to be deployed out of a hundred thousand. Expecting next phase in a few weeks, but a few weeks is probably more than two, if that makes sense. The name of the actual website with more detail for you and citizens in your district is BirminghamAL.gov/pickup. Again, that's BirminghamAL.gov/pickup. Um, I want to repeat that there are forty-five thousand left to deploy where we started with a hundred thousand. So it's forty-five thousand left. We, we cleared over half and we expect the next phase in a few weeks. Um, and phase is residential phase. So the, the remaining for to be deployed, uh, for our residents across the entire city. Don't actually know the name of neighborhoods, but I do know it touches all nine, nine districts and it's spread out in each side of town. In addition to that, um, we really need those trucks, our ex, um, fleet to check in on those trucks. And then we, the quicker we get the trucks, the faster we can deploy this.
Let me ask this. When we bought them, was there like a clause or something about the pandemic? Like, you know, sometimes when you buy things in a contract, if you don't get a certain, uh, item by a certain time, they will give you maybe, no? Okay. No, I was just saying, because we, we really are backlog because of...
We are. Here's the, so here's the thing. We, we, as a parent, say we have the bins. The bins are not the problem. We have them. They have the bins. The people you, before you in this contract, they have our bins. It's the bins are not the problem. One of the reasons you need the lift is because the amount of weight of trash in these bins. And so we, you know, our, our old process was, look, put anything out, we'll pick it up, not once but twice a week. So we literally had, and I wish I could show you, but the data. Employee after employee get hurt, some, pick up something on their hand, something drop on their foot. Well, you transition to this, these bins have, these bins weigh a lot. So you literally need, you need the new lift to comport with the actual bins. So the bins are not the problem. Uh, there's a, the backlog is on the actual trucks. So that is a very fair question and actually a good question, uh, but it's not related to this contractual agreement for the bins.
Okay. Um, and then just last question. Well, when everybody gets their bins, can we do, well, can I request like a town hall or something to remind people about, um, you know, how to properly put out your trash van, what you can put in there? Because I know a lot of times we would put them in the trash van. I think I heard a lot of the councilors say a lot of people would miss it. And also give people that one last chance to educate you about it before we really enforce it. Because I know, like, there are so many of us that get so many complaints about trash pickup and it's really unfair to a lot of our residents that do ride. And then they have residents that still don't put their trash bags in trash bins. So I was just like a request for a town hall and maybe, I know it costs more like a mailer or something for our older residents and then doing something with HICA with our, um, Hispanic speak, well, Hispanic, um, Spanish-speaking residents as well.
So that's already in the books. We don't have a date on purpose. Um, we want to, yes, about that.
I know you don't have a date, but I just want to request that. I just want to request it now.
So, so of the, we're coming full circle, right? If you recall, we actually put the neighborhood presidents and the council in the Bill Harrison Arena. We talked about, um, how we want to engage trash. I don't know if you all remember that. There was a whole town hall, a single, on a singular topic at Bill Harrison Arena related to this topic. Uh, we talked about a new way of engaging our trash. Uh, we talked about, um, litter, litter. We talked about, um, dumping. We talked about, there was a display of the type of cameras. Um, and so we're going to come full circle and follow up with our residents about, all right, now that we got this new phase, uh, sorry, now that we got this new way of engaging household trash, uh, now that there's a new ordinance, boom, boom, boom.
And, uh, and this is, I'm probably going to get in trouble. This is nothing against our neighborhood offices, but I really want to actually talk to the residents. I know a lot of us have like a budget meeting, like Councilor Woods, a few of us had town halls. I want to talk to the residents because I feel like a lot of residents are kind of in the bubble and they can't look at council meeting. Um, they're not on social media. So I think we missed a lot of the people that we really need to reach by getting this information to. So I don't know what that looks like, but I would really like something involving more of the residents. And it doesn't have to be all on you three. We can help out. But I just want to be able to make sure we talk to the residents too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, councilors? Thank you very much. Now we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-three passes. Next item.
A resolution authorizing the mayor, uh, item twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Birmingham to accept and to spend the amount of $2,500 of civil, um, I'm sorry, we need to go back. We had the replacement on this item, so let's replace it. I think council got that from Attorney King. And so I'll read the new item that should replace, item twenty-four. Synopsis, a resolution approving authorize the mayor to accept the amount of $2,500 of settlement proceeds from Mason, Jay Dillard and Company Incorporated, organized and existing pursuant to the laws of the State of Alabama for, as active said city, said funds shall be used to assist the city and neighborhood revitalization. The mayor is authorized to take any and all actions and to execute such other documents as appropriate and necessary to accept and spend said funds on behalf of the City of Birmingham. Said funds should be deposited in the general fund. General Fund Ledger Number One Twenty-eight, sixteen, five, thirty-four, thirty-two.
Councilors, any questions regarding this item? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I just want to understand, like, this is a settlement of a lawsuit. Is that what this is?
Yes, Counselor Abbott, this is a settlement for one of our drug nuisance abatement lawsuits and it's money coming back into the city.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Attorney. All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, item twenty-four passes. Next item.
I'm going to item twenty-nine, a resolution appointing one member to the Birmingham Planning Commission to fill the vacant seat previously held by Brian King, said term expiring October the sixth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
All right, Counselor Abbott, this is your committee.
Uh, yes, this is, um, this is the, we've attached the resume of Christopher Tyler Burks, who would be appointed, uh, upon approval to serve on the Birmingham Planning Commission through October sixth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Thank you, counsel.
And I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you. That resolution passes and we congratulate this, this, uh, citizen on being, um, selected to serve on this board. Thank you very much. Counselor O'Quinn, son.
Question, Counselor Abbott, are there other, uh, appointments on the planning commission that need to be filled? Are there vacancies on the planning commission? Any other vacancies?
I think I announced one last week, which I probably should have re-announced today, but I didn't. So, yeah, we have, we have one more and, uh, we're always looking for people to try to get some queued up because resignations happen and there are requirements that make some of these positions difficult to fill. So like you have, on ZBA, you have to have an architect, you have to have a contractor, you have to have a Realtor. Uh, so we, we like to sort of get resumes anytime, um, for people who can fill those positions. But the planning commission, these are just anyone who is a resident and is old enough and who will attend the meetings, which is the most important thing is the no-shows cause us sometimes to have to cancel meetings due to lack of a quorum. And that is exceedingly embarrassing to the City of Birmingham. It makes us look bad. So, anyway, but yes, there are more.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Should be item thirty-eight. A resolution setting a public hearing September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to consider adoption of the ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the City of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-three dash three, to change zone district boundaries from CB one contingency, Neighborhood Business District to C two general commercial district filed by Courtney Jones. The owner of property located at sixty-nine hundred Second Avenue South and situated in southeast quarter of section fifteen, Township seventeen, south range two west of Birmingham. Motion, please.
Motion on the item.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, councilors. This is a resolution setting a public hearing for September nineteenth. Any questions regarding the setting this hearing, the dates? We're ready for the vote. I'm sorry. They voted, oh. All right, so we've set that public hearing. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you all. Item number thirty-eight passes. Next item. All right, thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we're ready to entertain your announcements regarding your districts. And, um, Councilor Woods, are you ready down there? You knew I was going to do it.
I stay ready as long as... All right, do want to, uh, first off, just thank the, uh, UAB students. We had a group of honor students who came out Saturday, uh, to help to be litter-free community cleanup. Uh, we were able to get up four hundred and twenty-five pounds of litter, uh, in and around a five-mile road in the creek that feeds through the Grayson Park. And so thank you to them. Uh, District One Community Garden is getting ready for the fall planting. If you're interested in learning about the garden, how to garden, uh, you want to be a team leader, you want to participate, uh, just send us an email, clinton dot woods at BirminghamAL dot G O V. I'll be happy to get you plugged in, whether you are a master gardener or just learning. Uh, great opportunity to get out and just participate and, and help out. And maybe, uh, we'll be able to see how big the watermelons can get this year because as soon as they start growing, they start disappearing. So, uh, we can see how, how big they can get. So also Huffman Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, August twenty-eighth at seven P M. And that meeting will be held at Huffman Baptist Church. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. The Fountain Heights Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six P M. at the Fountain Heights Recreation Center located at eleven oh one fifteenth Avenue North. Dolomite Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight. And that's on conference call at six P M. You can call in at seven two zero eight four three two six six nine. Access code is three seven eight nine four two six. Inner Ridge Neighborhood will meet on Thursday, August the twenty-fourth. And that's on conference call at six P M. You can dial in at three one two six two six six seven nine nine. The code is zero six eight four six four. Drew Hill Neighborhood will meet on Monday, August the twenty-eighth at six thirty P M. At Petech's Stadium, located at twenty-one hundred Richard Harrington Boulevard. But you can also call in at six oh two five eight zero nine four five oh. The code is three eight six eight four eight four. We want to shout out to the Central Prep Neighborhood. They had their fall be litter-free campaign this past Saturday. So I did not attend, um, but it wasn't mandatory to attend. But they did a, a, another cleanup effort, so they had a lot of volunteers, um, a lot of agencies that assisted them. Also, Brenda Brown, Mrs. Brenda Hung will be hosting her community health forum in District Nine on Thursday, August the thirty-first, five thirty to six thirty at One Prep Heart located at six oh one Manhattan Avenue. And the next Public Safety Meeting will be held on today at one P M. But going forward, the next one will be held on Tuesday, September the twelfth at one P M. In conference room D and E. So please submit your agenda items by Wednesday, September the sixth, or later than twelve. To the following recipients, patris dot collins at BirminghamAL.gov, Gregory dot Stanley at BirminghamAL.gov. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Crestwood Neighborhood Association will be meeting Thursday, August the twenty-fourth at six o'clock at the regular, uh, location, Hope Church. Southeast Lake Neighborhood will be meeting Monday, the twenty-seventh at six o'clock at Southeast Lake United Methodist Church. Crestwood South will be meeting also on Monday, the twenty-seventh at six thirty P M. At the Jewish Community Center on Montclair Road. And this is just a reminder that the twenty-fifth Annual Sidewalk Film Festival, uh, will be, I believe, today, actually, through Sunday. Um, and so that will be something that, uh, obviously is very unique to our city and something that we're all pretty proud of, uh, with people visiting from all over, uh, the nation, actually. Um, tickets are available at sidewalkfest.com.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Counselor Williams already covered hot sidewalk, so happy sidewalk. Um, also happening, uh, this week, as it does every year when sidewalk is happening, the Taste, the annual Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival will, um, happen Saturday, August twenty-sixth and Sunday, August twenty-seventh, in the historic Fourth Avenue Business District. This event is free to the public. Please visit www.fourthavenuejazz.org for the schedule of performances and additional information. The Third Annual Modern Green Book Community Festival will take place this week at various locations with the vendor festival taking place Saturday, August twenty-sixth at Slos Furnace. Please check out www dot themoderngreenbook dot com for more information and to purchase tickets. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six P M. At the Fountain Heights Recreation Center located at eleven oh one fifteenth Avenue North. Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will also meet, meet tonight at six thirty P M. At Girls Inc. Incorporated. Uh, the address is fifty-one thirty Eighth Court South. The Transportation Committee will meet next Monday, August twenty-eighth at two P M. On the third floor in conference rooms, D and E. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at Kimberly dot Phillips at BirminghamAL.gov. And finally, I'd like to, um, offer a resolution of sympathy to the family of Miss Linda Allen, um, who, um, passed away in the past week. Um, Miss Allen was a longtime neighborhood president in the Gate City Neighborhood, uh, community president for the East Lake Community. Um, and I just wanted to acknowledge her passing and extend our sympathies to the family. So, uh, motion for, um, uh...
Resolution of sympathy?
Yes.
All right, this is what you see. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I'll move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Forgive me for interrupting. No, I usually don't say anything during, um, updates from individual city councilors, but, um, I, I want to pick up where Dr. O'Quinn left off. Um, Ms. Allen was an amazing woman. She, um, served the Gate City Neighborhood for a very long time. Was one of my first supporters, um, not ten years ago, but probably fourteen years ago. Um, spent time in her kitchen and, um, around the neighborhood. And if you all did know this, uh, both of her daughters are actually city employees today. So I, I too want to publicly, um, just let her daughters know I'm thinking about them and, um, express my sympathy to them and the entire Allen family.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Whitman. Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm, I'm really sad to hear about Linda Allen. She really was one of the great neighborhood presidents. You know, you can name about five great ones and she, she was definitely one of the greats. Um, the next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, which is Wednesday, August twenty-third. At three thirty P M., we will be in conference rooms, D and E. Um, because Dr. Lee is on top of everything, I wanted to announce we have an opening on the planning commission. If you're interested, please send your resume to Valerie dot Abbott at BirminghamAL.gov. The deadlines of, for submissions will be Friday, September first. Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, we have Redmont Neighborhood at five P M. At the Botanical Gardens. And on Monday, August twenty-eighth, at six thirty, we will have the Crestwood... And on Monday, August twenty-eighth, at six thirty, we will have the Crestwood South Neighborhood meeting at the Levi Community Center, which is a wonderful place for them to be meeting. And I just had a hard time finding the room last time. But now that I know, it will be better. Certainly, if you have any concerns, we want people to download that wonderful My Beham Three One One app to your phone. But if you just can't, then you can call three one one. So, and then we want all residents of District Three to please continue to visit our website for updates and information that we are unable to include right now. And that is www.bhamdistrictthree.com. So, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Abbott. Councilor Moore?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. The Norwood Neighborhood Association will be meeting on August the twenty-sixth via Zoom at six P.M. We also have the Kingston Neighborhood Association that will be meeting this upcoming Monday at the Royal Events Center at six P.M. as well. And so, those are your neighborhood associations, please make sure that you go out and attend. Woodlawn High School will actually be playing their first football game this Friday night at Bessemer High School. So, go Colonels. Next week, they will actually be having their first home game at the new stadium. So, that is also exciting. Really looking forward to a great season for them. Wanted to also, what else did I wanna do? I think that was it. Yeah. Oh, no, no, no. One last thing. I apologize. So, wanted to also give a shout out to Coach Jamal Best over at Jackson Nolan High School. He left last week, I wanna say on Friday. He's in the U.S. Army Reserves and was deployed. And so, wanna make sure that we send our love with him as well for the service that he's offering to our city as well. So, wanted to highlight him. And then also wanted to offer a resolution of sympathy to the family of Vanessa Jones. She's the Neighborhood Association President in South Woodlawn. And her and her family, you know, she lost her brother. And so, wanted to, yeah, just offer that to them. So, I move motion for resolution of sympathy, or motion for UC for a resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, just wanna make a comment about Linda Allen's transition. While I did not know her personally, the Board of Neighborhood Housing Services Board members, long-term board members, really are moved by her legacy of leadership on that board. So, just wanted to acknowledge her in that way, too, for her outstanding volunteerism. So, District Eight had a pretty big Saturday this past weekend. We started off teaming up with the Enslie Highlands Neighborhood for a cleanup. And we're grateful for the ongoing support of our partners in the Be Litter Free Campaign and also the neighborhood officers and residents of Enslie Highlands. And our partner, our volunteers from the Municipal Court Life University really were a difference maker this weekend. So, right after that, in a shower, headed over to Crossplex to celebrate the fifth anniversary of the Birmingham Starbucks Community Store. And it was, it was really good just to see how impactful that store has been on the community. And so, it felt like community. And the mayor and I were honorary baristas for five minutes. So, that was fun. Wanna just note that the Bush Hills Neighborhood will meet today at six thirty in the Bush Hills Connection Complex at the Woodrow Wilson School Auditorium. That's located at, the location is ten thirty, Fourth Terrace West. It's the front of the school. And if you can't attend in person, you may join via Zoom by going to www.bushhills.org to link to the meeting. Also, note that the Five Points West Community, under Mr. Johnny Gunn, will meet this Thursday, starting at six P.M. in the Community Room at the Birmingham Police Department's West Precinct. Also, gearing up for another big weekend in District Eight, we've got the Central Pratt Neighborhood hosting their Fun Day from ten to two at the Howes Sanford Recreation Center. And all are welcome to come and join the fun. We've already talked about the Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival and Sidewalk Film Festival this weekend. I do wanna just note that the Taste of Fourth Avenue Jazz Festival is celebrating twenty years, hence the two-day celebration. And it's just so commendable that a jazz festival that's free to the public can happen for twenty years straight. I just, I mean, hats off to them for that. Also, RPG, which is the organization leading the engagement efforts for the city's new Family Fund Center at the Crossplex, on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, they will host a free bookbag giveaway with school supplies along with sack lunches for school kids. This will take place in the Crossplex parking lot. I don't see a time, but it says, "All patrons must remain in their vehicles and volunteers will bring the goodies to you." Also, to receive a bookbag, a student must be present. The event will last for two hours, and you do need to register and get there early. So, you should go to their website for all those time details. And that website is And the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits, they're doing something that we're really interested in promoting. They're starting some education workshops in the month of September that will cover several topics related to permitting and inspections in the city of Birmingham. And, you know, I feel like people really need to pay attention to this because I see things happening in my district that kinda show me that people don't know about permitting and inspections. But the three workshops will help better inform the public of the requirements for pulling a permit within Birmingham and the inspection processes related to each permit. These informational workshops will be beneficial to both citizens and entrepreneurs and developers. The event is designed, each event is designed to be two hours long. And all events are free and open to the public. The first session will take place at the Crossplex on Thursday, September seventh, from ten to twelve, and will cover topics such as zoning requirements, pre-permitting meetings, and a new online permit guide for the city. Section B, the second session, will take place at the Crossplex on Wednesday, September thirteenth, from ten to twelve, and will cover the permitting process from A to Z, as well as a discussion around contractor education and ensuring that citizens have the correct information when selecting a contractor. The final session will take place at the Crossplex on Thursday, September twenty-first, from ten to twelve, and it will cover inspections and enforcement aspects related to permitted and unpermitted work going on within the city. So, I doubt that this is the end of this. It's probably just the beginning. So, you know, we're gonna be promoting this heartily so that the built environment can be positively impacted in District Eight. Each Thursday, please join us to get a few steps in. We meet up at the Starbucks at seven fifty-five A.M. to do a one and a half mile loop along the shade tree lines these days. Join our partners, join us and our partners, Freshwater Land Trust and District Eight Neighbors for a little morning exercise. All paces are welcome. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I believe, Councilor Moore, you had one item you wanted to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one last thing. So, two thousand and six, I got a chance to meet the finest girl on this side of heaven. I ain't gonna tell y'all what she had on, but it caught my attention. And so, two thousand and thirteen, August seventeenth, we got, I made her my wife. And so, ten years of marriage is what we celebrated this weekend. And so, just wanted to say happy anniversary to my wife.
Happy anniversary. Councilor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will be this Monday, August twenty-eighth at three thirty P.M. in Council, in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. The next PIC meeting is Tuesday, September fifth, at two in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due Wednesday, August thirtieth. This past weekend, we had another three-on-three basketball tournament at April one, and we had a good turnout. Last Thursday, we kicked off our three-part Financial Wellness Series in partnership with Operation Hope. And that is at the West End Library. We talked about credit management. Next month, we will be discussing home ownership. This evening, there will be a public meeting to discuss bringing the CAPS program. I'm sure you've seen them downtown with the red shirts on, on the bicycles. The Five Points South Business District, I think they'll be able to help out with a lot of issues that's going on down there. That will start at five thirty P.M., and it will be held in the Social Hall of Highland United Methodist Church. And then lastly, Councilor Moore reminded me of football season. The state champs. Y'all know that was Ramsey High School, by the way. Their first game is this Thursday. They will play Huey Town in Huey Town. And their first home game is next Thursday. And I think it's the game of the week, and they will be playing Parker High School. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Protem. These are announcements for District Seven. First, I'd like to congratulate and thank the invitation that we received to bring greetings and acknowledgement to the Mothers Against Gun Violence for their successful, it was their inaugural annual dinner extravaganza. They gave out some awards to some mothers that have been affected by gun violence. I continue to be in awe of the strength of Mrs. Rochelle Malone. She was the special guest speaker. She really imparted just her thoughts and her encouragement to us versus us encouraging her. She is the mother of the fallen firefighter and Jordan Milton. And so, we just continue to wrap her around in our thoughts and prayers. And we appreciate her for bringing that message during that event. I'd also like to offer condolences to the family of Demario Kirkland. Demario was the ten-year-old fifth grader at Oxmore Valley Elementary who subsumed his injuries in a traffic accident this past weekend. I know that Birmingham City Schools, they did have grief counselors on hand at Oxmore Valley. So, we also extend sympathy to Dr. Love and the faculty, staff, and students there as they mourn the loss of this student. Also, I want to thank those District Seven Presidents, Neighborhood Presidents, who came out for our quarterly chat and chew. It was a time for us to get back to basics. We often have speakers from various departments within the city, but we want to take this time with those Neighborhood Presidents to just talk, because a lot of them weren't meeting during the summer months. And so, they're gearing back up for September, their September meetings. And we want to talk about protocols, processes, use of nonprofits. Now, we'll have this great announcement to share with them about the tools that we're able to purchase and provide, that they'll be able to use within their neighborhoods. So, just wanna thank them. Mayor Whitman came by and gave a little love to them. So, we appreciate you, Mayor Whitman. They're always happy to have that opportunity for engagement. So, thank you. These are the upcoming events going on in the district. Wednesday, there's a bulk trash and brush pickup for the Poddley Neighborhood. On Thursday, August twenty-fourth, Industrial Center will meet via conference call at one P.M. The, speaking of football, the Winona Dragons will have their kickoff game on Thursday at the Bell Culpepper Stadium. And that's at twenty-eight hundred Wilson Road. And it's at seven P.M. And the Winona Dragons will be playing versus the Silicaga Aggies. Monday, the Tarpaulin City Neighborhood Association will meet at the Mary Door Center. Councilors, immediately following this meeting, stay put, because we will have a meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Birmingham Emergency Communications District. I believe there's only one agenda item, so it will be brief. But Mr. Silas will join us as soon as we complete this particular meeting. I do just want to remind you, you just have to have been hiding under a rock unless you knew. This is Winona Alumni Week. And so, we started on Sunday. We'll finish on next Sunday. We're all trying to keep, stay in pace, get your vitamin B-12, stay hydrated. We're gonna be out there for the granddaddy of them all at the, at Wiggins Park. So, I just want to say, Winona versus everybody. We are gonna do it. So, thank you all. I just had to do it. Go, had to do it. So, go Dragons. Alright, so, thank you all so much. Councilors, at this time, we'll entertain our speakers list. And so, Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
Keith Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It was brought to my attention yesterday that, over the weekend, there was illegal exhibition driving in the Norwood Neighborhood over the weekend. Very disturbed about that because this happened early in the morning where people were resting and sleeping. And there's also a video that was surfaced on social media of the event in question, in which the drivers were circling around a Birmingham police officer's vehicle. I don't know exactly what happened after that, but that video is very disturbing. You know, as if nothing was actually done. And it's really upsetting because you had, is it a residential neighborhood where people were sleeping? And they had to wake up to, at one thirty, two o'clock in the morning to that particular type of noise. And that is not only unacceptable, but that is pathetic. I'm kinda wondering what is going on with our Birmingham Police Department, what they're doing to address this issue, as well as the continuing, ongoing presence of rapid gunfire in our neighborhoods. Two days ago, I woke up to rapid gunfire that looked like firecrackers was going off. And I'm telling you right now, there's a growing concern about those two issues. And it's gotten to the point that people no longer feel safe in their neighborhoods. Well, my question is, what can we as citizens do to make our communities safe? And what role does our local government have in making sure that citizens are safe? It's very concerning. My nerves get unraveled when I hear things of that nature. Because I serve in the military, and I have PTSD. And every time that goes off, it sends my nerves to the roof. I shouldn't have to go through those episodes where we have, I don't know if we have the resources or the manpower to actually address this, but we have to have a conversation, a serious conversation about public safety in this city. Because whatever is going on right now and the money that's being poured into the police department, I'm not sure if it's working or not. So, we have to have a conversation, a serious conversation about public safety in this city. If not, you're gonna have a lot of people packing up and moving out of this city, because we already deemed to be the fourth largest city in Alabama. And if this continues, we're probably gonna be the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, or the eighth largest city.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you. We appreciate you bringing this. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you. We appreciate you bringing this, uh, these concerns and these observations to the City Council. I do wanna tell you that, um, we're, just like other citizens, uh, most of us, I believe, had the opportunity to view the video, and we witnessed what you saw, and it was just as disturbing. Uh, from a legislative ass point, aspect, I do want to say that as a City Council, one of our major items that we put in on our legislative agenda with the past session of the Legislature was to, um, the ordinance and improving how we go against and what we do in cases of exhibition driving. I believe that, um, state law went into effect maybe a few days ago. And, um, so we are looking to how we will be able to exercise our right as a city when we have that type of lawlessness that we, um, see on our streets. So thank you for bringing that to our attention and, um, sharing, sharing your concerns with us.
Who will be responsible for enforcing that law?
Well, as you know, we are the legislative body, and then now that enactment from the state has been made. And then we have, uh, Mayor Whitman, who is in charge of the Birmingham Police Department and the public safety in that aspect. And so he'll be briefing us, as well as the public on that. So thank you, Mr. Williams.
Uh, one last question.
Your time is up, sir. You have one more question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Shouldn't, shouldn't the Birmingham Police, uh, Chief be here to kinda give us some answers as to what has happened and what are they planning on doing to prevent this from happening again? I certainly do not want this to happen in any of our rest, um, of any neighborhood in the city of Birmingham. So I think that the Birmingham Police Department needs to be held accountable, and we need to hear from them as citizens of Birmingham.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Again, we appreciate your questions. And, um, in this case, as I said, the Birmingham Police Department, the, uh, Police Chief comes under a jurisdiction of Mayor Whitman. So Mayor Whitman will be directing and giving us, um, those next steps and what we can do in this situation. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there any other speakers? Thank you very much. At this time, Counselors, we will entertain an adjournment.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, and if you will stay put.